Pastor Jackson and Pastor Flores, would you mind leading us in invocation?
Thank you Mayor and City Council and all those that are with us today. Let's go to the Lord in prayer and thank the Lord. Father, we are grateful for this time, this season. These are your people that gather today, Lord. Ayuda señor, el liderasco y también todas las personas para participar en la comunidad. Todo para su honra y su gloria. Lord, just help us, Lord, to serve, serve each other, honor you, Lord, and be beneficial toward the city.
Just to remind everyone that tomorrow is National Day of Prayer for our nation. So everyone can pray that day for our nation. Heavenly Father, we just come right now in the name of the Lord. I set myself in agreement with my brother, Lord, in his prayers, Lord. You understand all languages, Father. But I lift up our City Council, our mayor, Father. I pray right now, Lord God, that you would lead, guide, and direct them in the way that they should go in protecting and making sound decisions for our city, Father. I'm asking you, Lord God, and looking up on our police department that's rolling around our city to serve and to protect, to keep that hedge around them and protect them as they are protecting our citizens. The same, Lord, with our fire department. Our schools, Lord, they need your attention. The children need your attention. The parents need your attention, Lord, that we can walk together and work together in unity and in one accord. Our businesses, Lord, I thank you for bringing the businesses back up. Then the COVID thing's been going down, but I thank you, Lord, for bringing it back up. And so we give you praise and glory and honor for the things that you are doing in this great city. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Thank you for that. I see we have Officer Newton. Would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Officer Newton, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. City Clerk, can I have your roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Councilmember Monica Garcia. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I'm here.
Oh, Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Okay, so we will excuse Councilmember Hernandez for today. City Clerk, please continue.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Emanuele Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session? And then it is my understanding that closed session has not been adjourned, so we are still, we are currently in recess.
That is correct, Mayor. We're currently in recess, and I will report out the settlements and the workers' comp case at the end of our closed session.
Great, thank you for that. And then we do move on to our Proclamations, Commendations, and Presentations. And so we do have our Older Americans Proclamation. And so I'd like to welcome our seniors to come up here and join us, join us up here in the council. And of course Irma, who helps with the seniors. All the seniors.
All the seniors, please.
And Marlene, I'm here too.
And of course Marie Contreras is with us today, and it is very nice to hear her.
Thank you.
All right, ready? Okay, so I just want to note that the seniors and their proclamation for Older Americans Month is actually our newest proclamation, so they get the very first one. So I hope you like our new design. And you can check it out, I'm very proud of it. So, a proclamation from Ball Park City Council. Older Americans Month, the theme of Age My Way, for May 2020. Whereas older Americans are among our greatest treasures, providing invaluable links to the past and wise counsel for the future. And the gift of longevity will ensure that today's and tomorrow's seniors will continue making significant contributions to our families by giving of themselves freely and by sharing their wisdom and experience. And it is important to acknowledge the contributions older individuals have made to our economic well-being in our communities and in the workplace. Through civic leadership and mentoring, the seniors of tomorrow will be increasingly multicultural and multi-generational, more diverse socially, ethically, and economically than past generations. An expanding elder population will profoundly impact every facet of our lives, redefining our ideas of work, retirement, and leisure, altering our housing and living arrangements, challenging our healthcare systems, reshaping our economy, and altering social public policy. And the opportunities and challenges that await us as we begin a new chapter in human history require our continued commitment to the goal of ensuring that our senior citizens enjoy active, productive, and healthy lives, and do so independently, safely, and with dignity for as long as they choose. And the Declaration of Older Americans Month coincides with the recognition of May as Older Americans Month by the President of the United States, with this year's theme being Age My Way. Now therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Posse Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older American Month and urge all residents to participate in appropriate ceremonies honoring these men and women. And before we take a nice picture, we do have a plaque for Jorge Hernandez, who we just celebrated only a couple of hours ago at the Senior Center for being our honoree for Older Americans Month. My brain is 55, so I qualify as a senior. So Jorge Hernandez, you are also our 2022 Senior Citizen of the Year at the City of Baldwin Park. The City Council applauds you for your volunteer work commitment and your dedicated service you provide to the citizens and community members of Baldwin Park. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to our city. May 4th, 2022. Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor, Daniel Damian, Mayor Pro Tem, and our councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Posse Hernandez, Maria E. Contreras, our City Treasurer, and Marlene Garcia, our City Clerk.
I'd just say thank you very much to you all. I'm very grateful to be chosen the Senior of the Year, I would say. Once again, thank you to you all.
And I do want to add that we have a very active senior group here in the City of Baldwin Park. If any of you ever would like to see active seniors go to their activities, they will dance away the whole day, the whole night. I've gone to some of their dances and I have to sit down because I can't keep up with them. They are amazing, they have so much energy. They have made Baldwin Park what it is now, so I appreciate you. I thank you for guiding us through this pandemic because they were at the forefront. We, as the younger generation, should have been catering to them and helping them, not this group. These group were passing out food to residents. They were there, they provided the services that they could, they did not give up. So we need to learn from you, we need to get your example and live the way you have lived. Thank you.
If we could move over to your right, a few steps. A little bit more. Do we have three cameras? We have one more.
Mayor, I also want to congratulate Mr. Hernandez on this wonderful recognition. I can't say enough about him and all that he's contributed to the City of Baldwin Park. I know that he comes out to Morgan Park daily, to work events, to be with the community, to support recreation and community services. And you're just such a role model and a great example of, you know, what our community is and what it should strive to be, you know, when it isn't. And so I just want to acknowledge you and Mrs. Hernandez and all of our seniors here and those who are not here. Because our seniors in this community have been such great role models. Staying active, staying involved, supporting the city. There's so much pride that comes with our seniors, and we just want to say thank you. We so appreciate all of you, thank you so much, well deserved.
And so I just want to reiterate what my colleague said, I'm sure, you know, we're all aware of. Seniors have been heavily involved, not just in partying, but also volunteering and getting things done here in our city. So, you know, they have well-deserved parties and festivities, but they also are involved. And so if you walk in at the Senior Center every now and then, you'll see that produce is packaged and things are ready to go for our food distribution. And it's because of our seniors that stay involved. So a big thank you to them for helping the community during these times.
Mayor, we also want to mention that Mr. Hernandez's family is in the audience. And if they want to come up so that we can take a photo, because I'm sure that they're so proud, just like we are, come on up.
I had an opportunity to speak to some of the family members, and they grew up here in Baldwin Park. And sadly, they've moved away, but they still remember where they came from, and they come back and visit. It's obviously that this couple has done a wonderful job, phenomenal job with raising a wonderful family. And, you know, individuals are living longer nowadays, so it's very important that we do appreciate our seniors and continue to provide them with the resources and the help they need so that they can continue to live a very quality life. And so I know here in the City of Ball Park, we've always strived to give them the best programs. They take some wonderful trips, I think they've even gone to Japan, if I'm not mistaken, in the past, yeah. So, yeah, we want to provide them with that quality life, so congratulations, and we're all going to get there one day, so let's give them a big round of applause.
And they're also, they're double celebrating because they just completed 50 years married, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, and next, we do want to recognize Deliani Saragosa. So Deliani, if you're here, you can come up to the dais. And then if your family and your team is with you, you can bring them as well. So Deliani's family? Okay, you can join us. Fair enough. So we have the certificate of recognition for Deliani. And the City Council of the City of Ball Park congratulates you for being named the Award Winner of the 2022 California Regional High School Sports Medicine Student of the Year for the AACI National Sports Medicine Competition. We wish you continued success on your academic endeavors as well as your volunteered time with the Athletic Training Sports Medicine Program. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to your school and our community. And so I'm going to hand it off to Deliani, and she can explain to us a little bit about her accomplishment and what she's looking to do.
Hi. So to get this award, I actually had to compete against a lot of people, like everybody in California. And I had to submit a lot of essays and show that I know how to do my job, which is usually help athletes when they get hurt. And then I was, I became one of the three finalists, and I competed with the three finalists by doing a presentation in front of 410 people, which I'm very shy, so. And then I had to do a bunch of tests, and although I did place third place, I think it's still an accomplishment to get there. That's it.
Yes, yes. So congratulations to Deliani, we're very proud of her. And we also want to make sure that we recognize all of our students. So if any of you ever have a student that is well-deserving of recognition, we want to be aware of it. Regardless of what school they go to, we want to make sure they get the recognition they deserve. Because they don't only, their accomplishments aren't just for themselves, they bring a favorable recognition to our city, and we want to show our gratitude for that. So next, we do have another important and very special moment. So we have our Ball Park Police Oath of Office, and we're welcoming our newest officers. And so I'll call them up here, chief. But we'll call you up here to the front of the table. And then we have Police Officer Joseph Valencia. And then we have Police Officer Jeremy Miranda. Police Officer Beatriz de Santiago. Police Officer Anthony Cabriales. And then we have some of our newest dispatchers, Jessica Gutierrez. And Yesenia Enriquez. Chief, you want to say some words and take over?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. It's a pretty monumentous occasion for me, being the new chief of police, to bring on four officers that, you know, that we've been struggling to bring in, to hire. Thanks to the City Council, we were able to unfreeze some spots. And so here's the result of the City Council's faith in the department and faith in the residents of the City of Baldwin Park. In addition, we've also hired a couple of dispatchers because we're sorely hurting in that respect. And it's a new beginning for us, you know, especially with the new officers that we have. I'm very proud to be part of this occasion where we're bringing in additional folks to help keep our city safe. So my thanks to you guys for taking a chance on the department and taking a chance on me. Thank you.
And we definitely want to show our gratitude, and we are more than excited to have every single one of you join the Ball Park Police Team. I think that there is no better time than now to join the BPPD and of course, the Ball Park community. As Chief mentioned, we have our newest chief, a permanent chief, Chief Bob Lopez, and he comes with a massive amount of experience and a great leader, in my opinion, and he's been able to make sure that our department runs efficiently and in the best ways. So I am excited for all of you because I'm confident that you are joining a department that is worth it. Thank you, and I appreciate the effort that you make and the long hours and dedications that you are putting towards this career.
I want to welcome all of you to the City of Baldwin Park. I am very excited, and I'm excited to see your family members here. And I want to thank your families for actually giving you to us because you're going to spend most of your time here in the City of Baldwin Park. So this is actually going to be not your second home, more like your first home. So I want to thank the families because I know it's not easy to have police officers. My niece is LAPD, so my sister's constantly talking to me when something's going on, and you guys know LAPD is always on the news. So I feel what your family's feeling, but I thank them and I thank you. You're going to love this place, and I know we're going to get to know each other better. Once you get to know the community, you're going to see what I'm talking about, so thank you.
And I'm going to make the floor available to our colleagues that are joining us via Zoom.
Mayor, I just want to echo what you guys have already mentioned. I want to welcome our newest police officers and dispatchers to the Baldwin Park Police Department family. As Councilmember Avila has said, once you get to know the community, you're going to fall in love with the community. Just one little thing that I want to just let you guys know is, always remember, although we're here to uphold the law, our first priority is always going to be to serve and protect the residents and the community of Baldwin Park. So welcome to the city and thank you very much for your service.
Mayor, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome our new officers and dispatchers. And welcome to the family of Baldwin Park. I hope that this is the beginning of a very long career and a very solid and very strong commitment to this community. I've lived in this community all my life, and I feel like I've always had very positive interactions with our police department. But even more so in the last decade. I'm very proud of the community outreach that the police department has done in this community. And so I just want you to know that, yes, you know, your job is to protect this community, but I also encourage you to build relationships wherever possible, wherever it makes sense. And to really reach this community, you know, in ways that maybe historically, you know, weren't really possible. But I think with this police department and the different community events that are hosted, you'll see that there is a good relationship, and I hope that you enjoy it. I hope that it benefits you personally as well as in your career. And, you know, we've had a shortage and a challenge. I think it's not just our police department, but other police departments have experienced it as well. So I want you to know that you are absolutely valued, and you're part of the solution to a great challenge that we've had. And so, you know, I hope that you move forward knowing that you are valued here and you have the support from the council and, you know, from the city. And I hope that in time from the community. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jeremy Valencia. Baldwin Police Guard. Ellsworth Division. Constitution of the United States and the Constitution. Yes, all enemies. All enemies sworn. I bear true faith. I bear true faith and allegiance. Constitution of the United States. I am truly. Have advanced reservation. Purpose of evasion. All in peace. I will faithfully. Present this.
Want to welcome the families up here and take a nice picture?
Why don't we have the officers come up here and talk?
Do you want to? Do you want the families to come here for us? You want to do one big report? Alright, so like, yeah, the family, I want to hear it. So you guys stand right here to your families and we're like. Figure that I got. Yeah, yeah, there it is. Got another one. Your family are present.
Get closer.
That's where you sit a little bit, folks. Do that as much as you can, yes.
What about, what about your case? Looking at city first?
Yes.
Yeah, if you guys want, you guys can definitely take a family picture by the side.
Once you guys are done. Once you guys are done with the flowers. So the community understands, you know, how hard it is to stand. I can hear the 22 years, sir.
Get ready. You know what? Can you scoot in more so that glass doesn't come out? There you go. Okay, look at it. Make sure it's okay.
Do you guys want me to take one too?
Take another one. I'm going to tell my sister to look for you and she knows. Yeah, that thing, look at it. Stand right there so that glass doesn't come out.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, look at this camera first. Or he's taking it off. Use my phone.
Take one more. So that the glass doesn't show. There you go.
If I can get the new officers and the new dispatchers to stay up front, please, and have the family return to their seats just for a minute. Whatever's easier for you.
What picture? I just stand between these two glasses.
I have your Alex Valencia Miranda. If I can get you guys just to the front again, let's put you on the spot. Ah, there we go. Those issues, my big boy voice. I'm going to face the audience. Thank you, just real quick. I wanted to talk to you about, a little bit about the process, the hiring process itself, as well as a little bit about each individual officer and new dispatcher. One of the things the public isn't aware of, and I want to take the time to sort of have you appreciate what it is that they go through. We started off this hiring process well over a year ago, went through hundreds of applicants. And we put them through an extensive background check from everything from criminal history, work history, ethics, family, all the way back to their time in high school up till today. And what you see before you is a culmination of the department's hard work in vetting and investing and believing in the individuals that you see before you. So I wouldn't, I would feel like we shorted them if I didn't at least touch on the hard work that they put themselves through. So if I could, I just want to say a couple of words about each of these officers. I'm going to go alphabetically by last name, starting with the officer. So there's a method to my madness and I'm not sort of just starting with favorites or anything like that. So first, on the right, we have, my right ear left is Anthony Cabriales. With Anthony, we picked up a 10-year-old officer here. Anthony has almost 10 years with the LAPD as well as two years with the California City Police. Comes to us with a wealth of knowledge, use of force instructor, firearms instructor. When he was with LAPD, he was honored and worked his way so he could be part of the gang officer at the Newton Division. He worked a violent task force, assigned to Metro as well as being what we call an FTO or a field training officer. So very fortunate that we got to pick up Mr. Cabriales. Next, we're going to, I thought my stuff was in order, but it's not. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Jeremy Miranda. Jeremy Miranda has some civilian time over with, I believe it was Fullerton. And he also was involved in what's called Outrehearse, which is a K-9 facility that helps train all law enforcement K-9 throughout Southern California. I think over there, he spent years and probably has over, I want to say 18,000 hours, if my notes were correct, participating and helping other agencies be proficient with their K-9 dogs. Just recently graduated from the Rio Hondo Police Academy. So we went, again, we went down, we looked at what staff, or I'm sorry, what applicants they had available. And we felt that he met the criteria we were looking for for the city of Baldwin Park. Officer Beatriz de Santiago. She put herself through the Riverside Sheriff's Modular Academy. And she also worked for the Riverside Community Police Department as a CSO and aspired to become a police officer. Again, with the rest of these officers, we look at their backgrounds, what they bring to the table with her education being bilingual and just the ethics that she brought. We felt she was going to be a good pickup for the city of Baldwin Park. And certainly, last but not least is Mr. Joe Valencia. Joe Valencia has some prior experience with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. He comes from a law enforcement family. So you can imagine the pressure that was put on him to be successful in this career. Joey, out of the four new officers, has been here the longest. He is on a second phase, getting ready into our third phase. And we see nothing but bright things in the future for him as well. One of the often underlooked sections of a police department is our dispatch center. They're the voice on the other end of the line if you've ever had to call 911 or report a crime. They are the unsung and the faceless heroes, if you will. And we're definitely grateful for the new additions that we've had here. It's our dispatch center. They've been put to the task lately just because of the hours of overtime that they've had to work and the number of days and just the time away from their family just to keep everything functioning as well as it should for the city of Baldwin Park. So first, I'd like to start off with Yesenia Enriquez. Yesenia has a very unique background in that she was able to both spend some time here in Southern California as well as over in Mexico, in Guadalajara, Mexico. She attended the Monobello High School as well as a regional academy down there called Tonella Norte. And she was also, just a little bit about her, very loved and enjoyed being a part of the folklore. Excuse me if I mispronounce this, the folkloricio dance team. She has some prior experience as a dispatcher, all with the civilians, not with the PD. But she did put herself in an effort to be hired here, put herself through a civilian dispatcher course. And last but not least is Jessica Gutierrez. Jessica has some prior experience as a police dispatcher with the Monrovia Police Department. I believe close to three years over there. So Jessica is probably halfway through her training program. And for us, that's helpful because it relieves some of our dispatchers and, you know, cuts down on the overtime and the fatigue that's put on them. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and I appreciate your time just to introduce the four new officers and the two new civilian police dispatchers. So with that, one last final round of applause, please.
So once again, we are, I know we're incredibly excited and proud of the work our chief has done. And of course, to welcome our newest officers and our dispatchers. And then, if you're not aware, May 7th is our Mental Health Awareness Walk. And we do have a pretty neat portion that'll be aimed at the PD. So Sam, I know that you've kind of taken the lead on that. So I don't know if you want to let the community know what's happening May 7th at our Mental Health Walk.
Yeah, so I can speak to the police-related event that the mayor is talking about. We are going to unveil four new hybrid police interceptors with a brand-new image and logo. And they will be on display at the Mental Health Walk Car Show.
Great, and we're definitely excited for that. And I think it's great, right? We're restructuring our police department, we're, you know, we're showing people how great our police department is and how much greater it can be. And we're hiring great and quality candidates. And then, and not only that, but we're giving them the tools that are necessary to get the job done, making sure that they're comfortable and feeling safe as they do so. So Sam, I want to thank you and you are the artist behind that, so I want to give you credit. So it's not just a local initiative, it's a full-on local initiative done by one of our own. So at this moment, I will move to open Public Communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one written request by Catherine Lozier, Public Communications regarding library updates.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The LA County Library has launched a free pool lending program, which is piloting at five libraries, which include Pompton, Lancaster, San Fernando, Norwalk, and our closest one is Rosemead. Customer, or excuse me, library customers will be able to check out hammers, wrenches, electrical cords, cookware, sewing machine, gardening tools, as well as power tools and much more. You can look online to see what each library is offering. And it is recommended that the customers call ahead if they would like to pick up an item. And then, in honor of Foster Care Awareness Month, any foster child 17 or younger who comes in and gets a library card will get a free book. And this is in partnership with the Department of Children and Family Services. And then, celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we have a couple of virtual programs. On May 11th at 6:30, we will be presenting a program on planting Asian vegetables in Los Angeles. And that's for those who might want to expand their palate beyond carrots and peas and learn a little bit more about Asian gardening by Master Gardener Florence Nishida. And then on Thursday, May 19th at 6:00 PM, Dr. Erin Quay-Nin will be discussing her provocative book called Passing for Perfect: College Imposters and Other Model Minorities. And this is a book that discusses Asian-American children who are raised to be high-achieving professionals and the ways that this could backfire. And that's based on a study she conducted. And then I also wanted to mention, we're having a couple of STEAM programs in person for children and teen at the Baldwin Park Library this month. On Saturday, May 14th at 3 o'clock, in partnership with the Department, the LA County Probation Department, we're having a book on aerodynamics and having a paper airplane workshop for teens and tweens. And then for young ones, 6 to 11, we're also having a snowflake art program where they learn a little bit about salt and get to make an art project from that. Thank you all so much for all that you do and have a wonderful evening.
Those are all the written.
Great, if anybody else is looking to speak, now is your time. Okay, I think Mr. Luna just got up, so as soon as Mr., it's just a first come, first served basis to the diocese, okay?
Hello, half a city council. This is terrible in residence of Baldwin Park. I don't think we voted to have those people that aren't here stay home. You city council cannot make up your own rules. You're run by the residents of Baldwin Park. You are not run by you and you and whoever else you may want. I think you should, honestly, Mayor, you're supposed to be the so-called separated person from the other three or four. So I guess technically, you have no authority. You don't either, or any of you. You're supposed to be working for the residents of Baldwin Park. Those people that are not here today aren't representing anybody. They should resign and get on their little boat and leave. Coming back to our city taxes, I hope the residents of Baldwin Park turn it down. Because you people spend money like if you grows on trees. I keep telling you, but you don't care. At the rate you're going, we are going to be bankrupt. Because you don't have enough money to pay for what you just hired. Where are you getting all this money? I know, we have special funds. She's not here. She may be here. The next one's not here, that, the lawyer's not even here today. So what are you guys representing? You sure in hell ain't representing us. Because every time we come here, we have disagreements with you people. Don't you people understand that you work for the residents of Baldwin Park? Or number one, are you dictators? Are you trying to do the same thing the Russians do? I hate to say that, but you look like it. What do you do? Vote on stuff, just you two? Those people that are calling in, how do we know who they are? They don't want to be represented here, so they should resign. That would be like, have these three people stay home and talk to you from a telephone. We didn't invite them and we didn't vote for them to not be here. I'm going to tell you this until the day the good Lord decides I'm going to die. Because you people are not the dictators in this city. You work for all of us and you don't do that. It's sad to say that you two that are here try to be here.
Your time is up, sir.
That's all.
Your time is up, sir.
You guys are terrible. Thank you.
My name is Juan Vargas. And I've been living in this city for the last 24 years. I'm a contractor. I have bring a lot of money in revenue on taxes for the city. And I love this city. Even if I have to go far away to buy the stuff, I rather to buy here in the city because I will live my dollars here in the city. But today, I had enough. There's a problem with the sweeper. You guys have five hours to sweep the street. In my street, which is, I live in Monterey Avenue. And the sweeper swim by by 7 o'clock, 7:00, 7:30. And we still have to wait until noon just to be able to put the cars outside. This morning, I had two of my sons, they work in my house. They work with a computer. I have to move my truck. And I moved one of my son's car and I put it outside. And I was going to go and get the keys for the other cars. When I, when I. When I, when I, when I went back to get the car, the car already had a ticket. And that was two hours after the sweeper stopped, swam by. All the cities, Alhambra, San Gabriel, they have only three hours. And as soon as the sweeper swam by, you can put the cars in there. And they don't go by the two streets, I mean, two sides of the street. They only go for one side of the street. In that case, you allowed to put the cars on one side. When the sweeper stop, you know, finish, you can put on this side. I got a ticket today. And for me, this is something that you guys not doing the work. I asked the Public Works, the code enforcement, and they said they don't have enough people to go behind the sweeper. That's not my problem. Hire somebody else. Hire more people for that day. But it's not, it does not make any sense. There's a sweeper stop, two hours after, three hours after, we're still at the mercy of, we cannot put the cars outside. And I was waiting for this for years, because all the people, they had done the same thing. I was waiting for this for years, for me to be here, because this is not right. And especially in this moment where a lot of people, they work from home. I have my truck, all my tools is stolen once, over $5,000 worth in tools, because I left the truck too close to the street. I have to put it way in the back.
Your time is up, sir.
I want you to do something for it, an amendment. At least, we can park the cars outside after the sweep.
Sorry, your time is up, sir, sorry.
Thank you.
John Reals, resident, 42 years right here. One of the things that I'm going to talk about is the homeless, okay? Everybody thinks they have the rights and everything. How about the citizens of Baldwin Park? Don't they have the rights? I had an incident two days ago at Barnes. There was a gentleman over there smoking weed and everything. Lady got down from her car. He was kind of abusive to her. The husband called me up right away. I told him, whatever you do, don't not get in a fight with them. Because he's getting ridiculous. Our police department, which we now have more, you know, cannot go by and start seeing the problem that we're having. Manny has the cameras, I know that. Even Manny has had problem with the homeless right there. He was over there the other day. He tried to tell those people they could be doing, you know, camping in there. He was lucky, they didn't go after you, Manny. You're gutsy. You know, not even myself would do that. But those guys are dangerous. You know, like I said, you were very lucky less when you went over there. And the things that I report Manny, Sam, or even to Anthony, you know, I report because I see it and because the people from the residents, they call me up and tell me. So I, in between the city and the residents, I saw you guys Saturday, right here, next door, cleaning up and everything. I saw the mayor over there going for it. The only thing about them that you did, you didn't have a hat on. We don't want to get in a sunstroke. We still need you for another, at least 20 years, okay? Enrique, I saw you too, you know, Manny. You guys were, you know, some of the people, what's going on? Even queer, some of my friends, they come like, hey, what was all that commotion over there? Oh, no, they were picking up everything, you know, that's dirty and everything, putting new grease and everything. I told them, we do that in our city. But you guys, that's your problem. But, you know, it was good. It was very good to see all of you right there. Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening. First of all, I want to start out with Princess Monica showing up for the pictures, but then she goes, runs back to her office. That's unacceptable. She takes off her mask so she can get a picture, but all of a sudden, she's going to catch COVID as she sits next to you, Ricky. What a classic deal. The other thing is, I want to, I want to talk, and this is not picking on you, Avila, but you made a statement last council meeting about that the homeless have rights. Now, let me give you an example. I called twice for the police to come out the other day. A crazy guy, homeless guy, was across the street screaming, yelling, scaring the customers and stuff from the smog shop, Royal Coaches, and my shop. So then, at the end of the evening, he proceeds to, I'm outside, and I see him chasing a young girl, probably 19, 20 years old, down the street. And he threw his shirt off into the street, and he's unzipping his pants, and he's chasing her down the street. Now, is that right? No, it's not. Now, I had to, I got in the car and intervened, and then we called the police and made them come out. Did the police come and pick her up to verify that this was the guy? No, I had to come down. I had to take her down there to the area that they had arrested him. Did they do anything to him? No. They didn't even put him on their 72-hour. I told him he'd been screaming and yelling all day. This has got to stop. You can't have young girls or young kids walking down the street and feel unsafe. This is not right. Now then, the other thing, the tax. I know you, Ricky, is going to be upset with me, but this tax thing's got to go away. We got the highest recession time right now that we've ever had in 40 years, okay? And you guys can't push a tax. And I'm going to promise you, I will put banners up, I will make bumper stickers, vote no on sales tax, okay? It's not a good time, and it's not good for the city right now. You're getting more sales if you keep the tax the way it is. But you go and you raise this tax, you're making a big mistake. And it's just like the vendors. Us old guys sometime know more than what you guys do. So please listen. Don't waste a lot of city revenue and time and all these community meetings you're going to have, because it's going to be wasted time. People will not vote to increase, no matter how you change the language, like they did on the gas act and screwed us on the gas tax. So I suggest that the city look into other revenues, like the weed business and all that stuff, and get that going.
Sorry, your time is up, sir.
But don't sit here and tax the people and businesses of the city over this stuff. Thank you very much.
My name is Abel, I was transmission living in Baldwin Park for 42 years. El complaint ahora? El complaint ahora es de que ahora si tenemos más policías creo que está mejor. Porque en mi negocio seguido se meten a robar, cortan los cables, la, el, esto, eso, y ojalá que haya más. Vigilancia. My name is Abel. I've been a resident of Baldwin Park for 42 years. And I'm here to make a comment in regards to, I'm glad to see that you have hired order police officers. That looks good, because otherwise, they will go into my business, and they cut the cables and steal all kinds of tools in the property. Y también creo que estamos haciendo buen trabajo en la ciudad, que está más limpio, pero necesitamos más, más que hacer todavía. Hay que reportar todo lo que vemos, le llamo a la yarda, si me atienden. A Sam, Anthony, me están atendiendo muy bien, y reporto lo que veo mal. I think they're doing a very good job. I think they're cleaning more and more, and it looks better in the city. And I called the yard, and I called Sam and Anthony, and they helped me out. They allow me the time to express my concerns. Ahora el problema es que le digo al señor aquí del su ticket, que la verdadera no pasa, y le dan tickets como quiera, y queremos ver qué dan tickets si no pasa la verdadera. Now, the issue is like this gentleman had said before in regards to the sweeper. Now, the sweeper goes by, and then they give him tickets afterwards. What can we do in regards to that? Y también quisiera que nos ayudaran a poner killer en las banquetas, hay mucha hierba en las banquetas. Y es todo lo que puedo decir, gracias. And also, I want to request some help in regards to the weeds that grows in the sidewalks. There's a lot of weeds on the sidewalks. Maybe they can put some killers or something to help us out. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Gloria Moharal, and I'm a board member of the East San Gabriel Coalition that is located in Hacienda Heights. I'm here to thank you. Thank you for all your support. We have in the last year housed 64 individuals of SPA3. And what our office does, we deal with low-income families, homeless individuals, and we work with the school district. And it's agencies and cities that help us deal with these individuals. And I'm hearing about homelessness and about this man's complaint, but we really do care about them and take care of them. And if we have issues with that, we work very well with the police department. And they're very good about coming and helping us and being very compassionate. And again, I'm just here to tell you, thank you very much for your support. And I hope to work, we work in the future.
Great, is there anybody else looking to speak? Not at this moment. I will close Public Communications. So I know that Mr. Vargas brought up the parking issue, and I know that that is a little bit of an issue. I mean, just in general, right? We have a lot of families that are kind of living in condensed situations just based on skyrocketing housing costs. And then, you mentioned another good point, that people are now working from home more than, more than usual, and it seems to be becoming the new norm. And I think it is a little bit of a difficult situation to address. I know that in certain areas, it's a little bit more difficult than others. So I think, for starters, maybe, Sam, we can see how our schedule could be better. I know that, I think it's the full day that you can't park. So that makes it a little bit difficult to find parking. I know I deal with that sometimes, and I have to maneuver my car into a weird spot. So I get that portion. Mr. Reals brought up a good point. We had our cleanup event, which I thought was a great event. I think we, it was overdue, and we had over 75 volunteers, including Mr. Vargas on the by-left and the Kowanis Club. And it was very neat to see the community come together and do their part in cleaning up our city. So I do hope that we can continue those events. I know that we still have to finish the MetroLink station. And hopefully, after we finish the MetroLink station, we move on to another site, remove blight, and not only is it a good way to clean our city, but to, for our residents to have some civic pride and be proud that they are part of that solution. So I definitely want to invite all of you to join us at those events as well. Wear a hat next time, don't worry. So, but yes, and I think you guys were talking about the work, and the work isn't done, but a lot of it's getting done. So I want to encourage you to keep following city council meetings, learn about what we're doing, and how we're doing, and why we're doing what we're doing. And I think that it's very important for you to be involved and informed in everything that we do, and we hear you. I did want, I did, I don't think I mentioned it, but Mr. Vargas, I did get your email earlier. Just wasn't able to call you today. So if you do reach out to the council, we will communicate with you. We are checking our emails, we are monitoring any sort of mail that we get, and we're attentive to what you have to say.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Bravina.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all of those of you that came up to speak. I appreciate hearing your concerns and your compliments towards the city as well. I do, I agree with the mayor in regards to the sweeping situation. We need to look into the scheduling, and I agree. For example, good example, today I came home early for lunch, and it was 11:30, and I had nowhere to park, so I didn't stay for lunch. I just turned around and went somewhere else because I couldn't park my car. My driveway was full with the other cars. So I agree, it is a problem. The sweeper did go by very early, but we were still not allowed to park. So it's a conversation we can have, Sam, to see what we can do. Look at, I know sometimes a sweeper may be delayed for whatever reasons, but what is the maximum amount of time that they need to actually get the street swept? Is it possible to do half of the street, like Mr. Vargas said, at certain time, and then the other half? I don't know the logistics of that. So if we can look at that, there's always solutions. So let's start having those conversations, so see what we could do, because there's still a lot of people working from home. Mr. Tuttle, thank you for bringing that up. And I absolutely agree with you. Anytime there is violence, it should not be tolerated from anybody, period. So I'm glad you called the police department. So now, the conversation is with the police department chief. We need to get together and talk. What is the procedure? What is the process? What Mr. Tuttle described to me sounds very scary for him, that he saw it, and for the young lady that was experiencing that situation. What are the processes when this is happening? If the person is a danger, whether it's a homeless person or not a homeless person, what is the process when a person encounters that? So we can have those conversations and see what the processes are that our police officers are taking to make sure that our residents are safe. And, and yes, homeless have rights, we all have rights. But when it comes to committing a crime, it's not acceptable at any given moment. So we definitely need to have those conversations, chief, to make sure that the correct processes are being done for whatever the situation is, because we don't want our residents to feel unsafe at any given moment. And make sure that the person that is being targeted, that we have a conversation with that person as well, to speak to somebody. I know Cynthia is excellent person. I'm sorry, Cynthia, I'm adding more work to you. If somebody needs to speak to her, or she can provide services, because sometimes, we shouldn't just handle the problem, but also the victims. So if we can look into that, chief, and see what the processes are, if we need to adjust processes, which sounds like we may need to, so we can do that. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Tuttle. I appreciate that. The cleanup went great. Yes, it was. I did wear a hat. It was very hot, but it was fun. It was a lot of fun. But let me tell you, I was exhausted when I got home. But it was a lot of fun, and I took a lot of pride. So now, what we're asking the residents, because we are looking into doing more of these events, is to look out for areas, and I know there's a lot of areas, and we can only hit so many areas at a time. But bring them up to our attention, the ones that we need to go and bring a full force of community members to clean up. We definitely need to do that a little bit at a time. So we need to communicate, bring more people to volunteer to help us. It was a lot of fun. So let me see who else. Mr. Abel, thank you for the compliments. We are excited about more police officers coming in our community. And yes, Sam and Anthony are doing their best to keep the community clean, but it takes all of us. And you guys calling and letting us know when there's a cleanup that needs to be done immediately, that's very important. You are our eyes. We're not at every corner, and I know you guys are. So when you call, I appreciate it when you tell us, hey, there's an area in the city that really needs a cleanup. So I know Public Works is really good about going and picking up items that are bulky items when waste management has not done so. So let's keep communicating, calling the graffiti, make sure there's a graffiti hotline. Call it in so they can remove it as soon as possible, because we do want our city to look good. I think that's about it. So thank you, everybody, for speaking out.
Great, thank you. Do any other councilmembers have any comments? If not, at this moment, I will close, oh, I already closed Public Communication. So we are on our way to our consent council. So we are on our way to our consent counter. So is there any items council is looking to pull?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item number eight.
Okay, item number eight. Anything else? If not, I'm making motions to pass items number one through seven. Can I get a second? City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Strata?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. So we are at item number eight. Councilmember Damian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that this is a receive and file item. However, I think that we need to give more of a clear direction to staff as to which route we want to go with regarding the family service center. After reading the staff report, there's a couple of options that were giving us here. To be honest with you, the way I see this property here is either, one, us develop the new community service, the family service center there on our own. Or two, if we can't build the family service center, then maybe look at other options to include more of either, you know, coffee shops, restaurants, something that will tie into Main Avenue and our vision for the downtown. I would not be in support to sell the property. I also would not be in support, no disrespect to Habitat for Humanity, they're a great partner. But I just don't see a thrift store there in the middle of our downtown. So I think that we need to give directions to staff as to what option we want to go with. There is at the bottom where Manny from our Parks and Recreation Department did apply for a federal government grant of five million dollars. Obviously, once we have a set direction as to which way we want to go, it'll be easier for us to obtain those grants to build the new family service center. But the way that this report is written, it seems like it's going in a different direction than initially thought of. And I am not in support of the way it's going. So I would recommend that we give direction as to which route we want to go with this property.
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you, Councilmember Damian. I actually, I read the report also and I recall the plan A was originally to build more areas for restaurants, bar to tie into our downtown specific area. But then the family service center, I don't know how many of you have been to the family service center. It's small and so we can only provide a certain amount of services. So we do need more space. I think that specific area would tie in perfectly with the park area, with the rest of the services that the park already offers, that Parks and Recreation already offers for our community members. Because bringing in that family service center there, like I said, it would tie in. But we can also make it connect to the restaurants because in addition to the family service center, we can allocate a certain square footage to allow for a coffee shop or a restaurant adjacent to other restaurants and make it a walkable area. So I'm definitely myself, no disrespect to Habitat because they're doing a lot for our community. But I think family service center would service our community members better than having a thrift store there or whatever it is they're planning to use. We have been acquiring land to better our city and provide more parks and services for our community members. And it just doesn't make sense to sell land that we can actually use to enhance services for our community members. So I'm definitely in agreement to give direction either to continue with the plan for the family service center or just to build, to add more restaurants and coffee shops to enhance our downtown walkability in that area. Thank you.
Great. So I did meet with Habitat. And so I think that we have to consider certain things. And so, you know, the city cannot build commercial property and lease it out. It just doesn't work that way anymore since last year based because of the housing surplus, the surplus land act. So the city is not going to be able to build any coffee shops there, do anything on its own. It's going to have to be through some sort of private partnership, I think. So I did speak to them. I asked them about their restore in Duarte. So their Duarte store is actually smaller than what they would propose there. It's sixty thousand square feet and it brings in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in gross revenue a month. So it does bring, it generates over a million dollars in the local economy, which I think is important. They would bring thirty full-time jobs. And they are our total partner, not just our partner in the affordable housing mission, but they are a total partner on a federal level. So they do, and I know that we have this notion that they're a full-on thrift store. So they do sell lightly used items, but they also have contracts and partnerships with companies such as Crate and Barrel, Williamsonoma, and Pottery Barn, which would actually increase access to these, would have quality items in the downtown. One of the reasons Bob's Furniture Store came to Bonn Park was because the city, I believe, did a study and that said that we were leaking one of the biggest money, one of the easiest monies we're bleeding out money was because we didn't have a furniture store and all of our residents are going out to buy furniture. To me, it's more than just the restore. It's a headquarters, a downtown, a headquarters in the Bonn Park downtown. You know, beyond coffee shops and all that stuff, I think we have space for that, the SoCalo. So that's something to consider. We need people to work here. We need people, you know, a lot of times I hear this idea that we need people to live here and take the metro link to LA when it should be the other way around. We should want people to live here and work here. And doing that, doing this increases jobs in the downtown, making sure that there's people walking around, buying lunch here, spending their money. So there's actually, it brings life to the downtown. We need people to work here. We need people to live here. And they have proposed adding to a third floor with housing and helping us create affordable homeownership in the downtown, which I think is neat. You know, when we said no to the first ENA, that was because it was a project that just didn't make sense in the downtown. It would have created a neighborhood essentially in the heart of the downtown with no walkability and essentially just not making that area more unwelcoming than anything. Nobody would want to hang out at a park in somebody's backyard. So those are the things that I've considered. I know that in the report, there has been other opportunities for a family service center. And I think that we do have it. We have the facility for the Boys and Girls Club that's completely empty. We have our current family service center, which can be expanded. And I know that we are, and then we do have the vacant land next to City Hall. I know that we are also, I know that we've applied for a five million dollar grant, which is very generic, so we haven't picked a site yet. So that's something to keep in mind. So I don't know if staff has any information on the recommendations for potential sites.
For an alternate site for the family services center, Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it could be, we know that the corner building, Ramona and Baltimore Park has been on the market for a while. That's one. You mentioned the vacant lot right here in the Civic Quarters. Those two for sure come to mind. So yeah, the five million dollar grant that both you and Councilmember Avila, Mayor Protem, mentioned, that would probably inform the direction if we can wait for, whenever we can get word on the grant, which, you know, may not be more than a couple of months, maybe, Manny?
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. I do not have a specific date. I suspect it would probably be part of the new fiscal year of the federal, which transpires in October. So I would estimate that we would find out probably by the end of the year. Thank you.
So that would have a time component to it. I believe that as long as we do not look to dispose of any land and, you know, we have potential intended purposes, you know, it would not be subject to somebody saying, you know, this land needs to be used for affordable housing. So I think it's only when we trigger a potential disposition of the land that the exercise of compliance with the land surplus, the surplus land act would be triggered. But if we don't, if we don't move on any direction for now, I think we're fine.
Manny, correct me if I'm wrong. Wouldn't it be easier to obtain a grant once we know exactly what we're going to use the grant for? So as an example, we already have direction that if we're going to build the family service center there, and basically we just need the funding for that. And we have the plans set to obtain those grants. Wouldn't it be easier for us to obtain those grants knowing exactly where it's going versus kind of being in limbo as to just saying, we want to use these funds for a new family service center, yet we still don't have the location where we want to build it?
I can't speak specifically in regards to the grant requirements of having a set location. When we submitted the grant, we did indicate it would be on city property. So there is a presumption that the land would be already owned and the grant would pay for the construction of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. And I just, I mean, I can't see myself, we're spending money purchasing and acquiring other properties, yet we're going to go and sell a prime real estate location in the heart of our downtown where we're trying to develop something with a vision where we want downtown to thrive with the new SoCalo there. We want it all to come together there. For me, I just do not see ourselves selling a prime real estate location when we're acquiring other properties. For me, I still stick to my original plan, which is either we build the family service center there or we, you know, use community development to get those boots on the ground and let's try to figure out private investors or developers who want to come in, develop our downtown and bring in restaurants, coffee shops, whatever it is that is going to make it to where people can congregate out there and attach it to our downtown. But for me, my first initial was, let's build a new family service center. Our community deserves it. There are a lot of nonprofit organizations that we're working with and we need to be able to house them all. I am not in support of selling this location.
So if we want to work with developers, we're going to have to sell it either way. So we, it's the lease, yeah, so it's the lease or purchase of the property from the city. Going through that is going to be, I think it gets very subjective because it's based on putting out a listing for three months, allowing people to show interest and then negotiating in good faith with every single one of them for six months.
But why not stick to the initial plan of building the family service center there?
Well, we have more than enough space everywhere else. If we want to build a family service center, you know, we've talked about the SoCalo. We've talked about wanting the SoCalo to be a venue where people can get married, have events. If we have a family service center closer to it, it makes more sense that they would use that SoCalo. Use the SoCalo and then walk to their venue to have their event.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I haven't had an opportunity to speak.
I know, I get that, but I'm currently speaking, so just give me a chance. So those are the things to consider. So it sounds that even if we don't move with the family service center there, we're still going to have to sell it if you want to work with a private developer. And we're going to go through a longer process. To me, we have more than enough space everywhere else. It is having an organization like Habitat for Humanity have their headquarters here, I think is a big deal, right? And it puts us on the map. Currently, I don't think our downtown is known to have anything, right? You pass by West Covina, they have Jubilee Headquarters. You pass by Full Time Monrovia, they have a field to it. We're working on our field. But we need traction, not just shops. We need the people that are going to sustain those, sustain those businesses even during business hours as they go out for lunch or brunch.
Mayor, I waited patiently to speak on the item.
Yeah, I know, but if I'm speaking, I just can't let you interrupt.
Well, you're monopolizing the time. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm the chair, so please have some respect. Go ahead.
Well, I'm asking you to give me the time that, you know, that I deserve as well.
It's granted.
Okay, and to speak my opinion. I mean, you've taken extensive amount of time to share your opinion. And so I'd like to go ahead and share mine since everybody else has. Thank you. So I want to echo Mayor Protem Damian's comments because the family service center has historically served as a hub for nonprofits that partner with the city to build capacity in providing services that the city typically cannot or is not able to, you know, provide. And when we first took up the item of expanding and rehabilitating and, you know, making the family service center anew, I was excited about that. And we listed in that report the various types of services that would be offered, including mental health, which is something that has been offered, homeless, I believe, veteran services. These are services that our city has historically not had the capacity to provide. So what do we do? We partner with nonprofits that are able to. And I would like it to continue, you know, to serve that way. I would not like this property to be sold. It's a city property and it should continue to serve as an arm of the city in collaboration with nonprofits that are serving our community. And I really like Habitat and all that they're doing in our community. And they provide one service and that's typically affordable housing. And they have their place here and we welcome them. But I don't want to remove or displace other services that are being offered at our family service center. In fact, I want to bolster what we are offering, which I thought was the vision. And I think that's what, you know, was described in the briefing to us earlier this year. So I would have to agree with Mayor Protem and I think I'm hearing Councilmember Avila say that, you know, we would like to see the family service stay as a city property. And then as far as the surplus property behind BMR, we can look at a proposal, you know, that is either part of or separate from the family service center. But when I was looking at this briefing in the agenda, I was very confused. How do we go from wanting to renovate or renew the family service center and breathe a new life into it to now incorporating Habitat? I don't even think that we have even had that discussion. So I don't even think it should have been part of the agenda. And anytime that we're talking about an RFP for any property owned by the city, then we should definitely be doing that in, you know, the discussion of an ENA. And so this kind of took a life of its own and I don't even think we discussed it here on the council. I'm glad that we are now. So I do want to express that, you know, I agree with Mayor Protem Damian's vision for the family service center.
Yeah, so just for, I think you're missing understanding what the information is. We're not talking about the original family service center. We're talking about building a new family service center in the lot behind BMR. That was given direction a long time ago. And for the record, I was a big proponent of that. Nobody is trying to dismantle a family service center or reduce nonprofit usage. I've been a big proponent of bringing in more nonprofits and I continuously meet with them. We're talking about building a new family service center behind BMR. And so we had that discussion months ago. We gave direction. And during that time, we actually had Habitat for Humanity on the call and we had them here in our meeting and we talked about a joint venture. So the question is now, should we not have a joint venture? Let them develop something there and we can find a space for the family service center?
I would still say that we go on our own. We create the family service center on our own, remain, keep the property, city property. And, you know, maybe find a new location for their headquarters if they want to come to Bonn Park. We would be more than happy to have them here. But I think again, we are, you know, this is not part of the vision that we had for our downtown. Um, so I would recommend that we give direction to continue with developing a family service center of our own. No joint venture, just the Baldwin Park uh, family service center. Um, and then start working on grants to try to fund it.
And I, I agree with that and I think it just ties in perfectly with the services, uh, the senior services and all the other services that are already being provided at Morgan Park. It's close to Morgan Park. Uh, all the services will be tied in together and I think it would just make that area a lot nicer. And the the current family service center, we can use that as a rental facility. We can actually uh, take money from that in addition to uh, providing other events there.
So I think we gave direction during our Housing Authority meeting months ago to explore the possibility of turning the old family service center into an expanded McNeil Manor for senior housing because we have our senior center across the street. Um, so if we, if we really run grants, I think building the families, the new family service center next to City Hall actually increases our possibility to getting grants because it would be uh, public transit based, based on the fact that you can get to the MetroLink without even crossing a street. And a much more proximity to more parking, making sure that people use the parking at the MetroLink, which we, I think are in need of. Because we need, you know, eyes everywhere and that will keep our MetroLink a little bit safer, a little bit better. It sounds like we're not even in uh, a, a preance anymore on what we want these properties to be, even with with past uh, direction. So I think maybe, you know, I think we're, we're kind of going back and forth on, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, whether we want a venue there, we want a, a kids center there. We're going back and forth now on the family service center, whether we want a venue there or expanded senior housing. And so, and then of course, we have the new, the uh, family service center and what we're gonna do there. I think that we should have a study session on all of these properties and go from there.
Mayor, if I may, um, I, I mean, honestly, necessarily, I don't think we have to mix them all together. I think each individual project is an individual of its own. I think that for tonight's purpose, uh, discussing, discussing uh, item number eight, I think that we should give staff clear directions so that we can get moving on this as to what it is that we want to do with this particular parcel on Lauren Street. I don't know if, if we have to uh, make a motion to give direction or how this would go, but to me, again, I would, I would definitely go with continuing to create our own family service center um, and keeping the property to ourselves, not selling it uh, to Habitat or anybody else. Um, I think that we need to go with our original plan of creating the new family service center there.
Mayor Potem, um, is the possibility to just expand on the existing family service center? I mean, what, is that one possibility? Maybe we look at as we take up, because I agree with you. I, I, when I looked at this report, with all due respect to the mayor, I felt like it was jumbled. Um, we were jumbling family service center with the surplus property with Habitat Humanity. Those are three different items that we can take up. I agree with you. And when we take up the item on the family service center, we can look at possible sites, including the one where it currently sits and maybe look at an expansive project that comes into the parking lot. Um, or you know, we, and we look at other potential sites. Um, you know, if we want to look at the site behind Viamod um, or other properties. And so we take it up one step at a time. And then you know, on the, on the other projects, you know, we take those up one step at a time. Uh, my concern is that with the family service center that we currently have, um, you know, we need to have a replacement for it before you know, we, we dismantle any, any programs that are there. Um, so I think that would be the, the first step is to identify the site that makes the most sense.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't want, we don't want to disturb the services that we're currently providing there. We would definitely want to build a new family service center before we do anything with the old family service center. I guess the key question here is, what is it exactly that we want to do with that location there? Um, uh, behind the Viamod, right? That's gonna be the biggest, the biggest factor here. What is it that we want there? Because to me, number one, I, I don't want to sell it. It makes no sense to sell prime real estate that we have when we're out there purchasing properties. Um, number one. Number two, to me, it just seems like if we don't have the family service center there, what else can we bring there that's gonna tie into the vision of downtown, right? We're talking about making this a walkable downtown. We have a Soca Lo, we want to bring it up north on Main so that we can have it walkable and people are not just stuck to the Soca Lo. Um, you know, affordable housing. I don't want to see housing behind Viamod. If that was the case, then we wouldn't have asked the Olsen project, right? Yes, even though it's affordable or market rate value, it doesn't matter, it's still housing. Um, so I don't want to see housing go up behind there. We, we want to take advantage of that prime location. Um, so to me, the bigger, the bigger question is, what is it that us as a council want to do with that location? For me, in my opinion, I would still consider going with the original plan of building the family service center there. Once we move the old family service center to the new family service center, then we can address what we want to do with the old family service center.
So we don't have to disrupt operations at all, actually. So as I mentioned, we have more than enough space. Currently have the Boys and Girls Club that doesn't have a plan in place. So we could work simultaneously on all these things. Um, to me, I think that's an idea. Uh, personally, I, before I make a decision, I would at least want a study session so that we can better understand the surplus land act and uh, you know, if we wanted to do something else other than the family service center there, what the process is.
So what was your motion, Mayor?
I didn't make a motion, but um, I said, I would like a study session before we make a final decision. So that we understand the surplus land act, what it would put, um, how it could hinder the idea that we have for the downtown. Uh, and then we have a more, we have a more detailed uh, explanation, then we can make a more uh, sound and concrete decision, final decision, if anything.
And I think uh, a study session should have actually been done before this was put on the agenda, so that way we wouldn't, we wouldn't have all these questions and confusions. I agree with Councilmember Damian with the family service center being there, but uh, a study session would be good. That way we can have Councilmember Hernandez there as well. Uh, and we can explore all the possibilities of what we can do in that location.
Yeah, I think on, on the item of the family service center, um, I think that, you know, your recommendation, Mayor Potem, is a good one. Let's look at alternative sites for the family service center, including the site behind Viamod and see what that would look like, um, what that, you know, that would look like against, let's say, the site at Morgan Park that the mayor has mentioned, um, Boys and Girls Club against another site that staff may have in mind. And we can just look at some alternatives. Have a study session specifically on the family service center because that's what I, I read, item number eight, the family service center. And so, you know, that's, if that's where we want to focus, let's focus there. Rather than having, having it grow arms and legs and, you know, taking it and taking us in different directions.
I agree. Let's have that study session.
We're going in circles. I think that, why don't we have a study session? This way Councilmember Hernandez is also present. And then let's have staff bring back options. Give us the options as to what we have. And then from there, we can go ahead and give final direction as to which is the best way to go.
I think that's fair.
Okay with that?
Sure.
That's your motion. I'll second it.
Okay, that'll be my motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Abila?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Abila? Uh, Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we are at public hearing. So a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2022, 2023 Annual Action Plan. Staff recommends that Mayor and City Council hold a public hearing and accept public testimony and approve the final 2022, 23 Annual Action Plan and authorize the city manager to execute the documents required for submission of this plan for CDBG and home funds to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. So at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing uh, regarding the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Annual Action Plan. Anybody who's looking to speak in favor, now is your time. Anybody looking to?
I apologize, but this is on the uh, CDBG money? For the public hearing? Okay, I, I was getting talked to, so I didn't hear. Anyway, um, the thing that I investigated when we did the CDBG monies uh, back in the day here, not the, the new council, but the old council, was misuse. And we already know how the Finance Director misuse funds for the code enforcement. So we already know that. Um, the thing is, these people that you're going to nominate need to be investigated. A lot of these old timers that are on the, on the uh, thing of getting this money are not doing the paperwork. They're not doing the process that they should be doing. And they're, and they're not, I've had, when you have this phone call thing of the uh, where people have uh, emergency call to call because they're gonna commit suicide and stuff. It was interesting that it was like two different people calling all the time. That was it. But they were getting allotted all this money. Uh, the food banks that are giving food and doing the stuff, the churches and all that stuff. A lot of them were not doing what they were supposed to be doing and keeping all the receipts and everything. There weren't, they weren't on record. So I highly suggest that if you are gonna vote for all these people, whatever you're gonna do for the ones and a lot of the money, make sure that they're under uh, investigation and they're checked. Because I don't believe that a lot of these people that are getting this money are doing it legally and that they are being s- watched. So please, make sure that your people go in there and check and validate and they have receipts, which they don't have. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Potem, Council and public that's still here. I'm Paul Flotis, a pastor at Church of the Redeemer in Baldwin Park. Uh, we currently serve as a food bank and we have uh, put in for CDBG funds regarding our food bank. Uh, I highly uh, ask for consideration of that amount. Uh, we do follow the protocol necessary. Uh, that's to ensure the funds that are used appropriately. All of our funds that we've requested go directly to food only. And uh, we use that as a way to kind of multiply the volunteer force as well, too. So just ask that you consider, we're longstanding uh, partners with the city since nineteen sixty-one. Uh, we continue to want to be a part of the solution with the city regarding uh, feeding the homeless and feeding the hungry. And uh, we just thank you for uh, allowing us to be that part uh, these many, many years that we have been part of the CDBG funds. Thank you very much and uh, I appreciate your consideration of our grant proposal.
Is there anybody else looking to speak? If not, I will officially close the public hearing. Um, and then I don't know if any council members have any questions, comments?
I just had a question, Mayor. Are they, is, is someone gonna uh, present the annual action plan or was this just for our reference?
We were prepared to present it, Mayor Potem, and uh, you, you know, if, 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 if that is the will and the wish of the council, we definitely will.
Yeah, let's go ahead and present it because we may have some questions.
Okay.
I mean, you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. Um, we are bringing a presentation on the annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, the city received uh, resources from the Housing and Urban Development Department. We receive Community Development Block Grants and Home Investment Partnerships Program, um, also known as HOME. The anticipated resources are nine hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is estimated for the uh, annual CDBG funding. And three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight estimated on the annual home funding. HAD has notified the cities that the um, official CDBG and home allocations will be released sometime by around May thirteenth. So we are utilizing last year's funds. Um, HAD usually recommends that we increase or decrease by ten percent uh, to work on our budgets, but um, staff decided to use um, last year's allocations. So just to give you a background, the annual action plan acts as the city application process for the Formula um, grant. And we mainly comprise, which mainly comprise of the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Program. The action plan describes the rationale behind the specific allocations for the upcoming fiscal year and details also the uh, city's use of CDBG and HOME to address the priorities that we have in the five-year consolidated plan. The fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Annual Action Plan uh, covers year three of the five-year um, adopted consolidated plan. And just to give you a background, um, there are certain requirements for the CDBG program and for the HOME program. So for CDBG, there is an administration cap that is uh, twenty percent of the grant. And also there is a public service grant cap at fifteen percent of the grant. And for the HOME uh, program, we have uh, ten percent uh, for administration and fifteen percent for the CHODO. Um, and also we um, emphasize on the local priority programs. Um, we fund public service grants, uh, housing rehabilitation, removal of blight and enhance uh, public safety, infrastructure and uh, development of uh, low and moderate income uh, housing. For CDBG, as we mentioned, we estimate that we're gonna get about nine hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Um, also, we have an expanded funds from prior years in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. So for this uh, fiscal year, we have uh, an estimated total of funds available of one point one million for CDBG. Uh, for HOME, we have an estimated amount for, of three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. And we have an expanded prior year funds for two point six million. Uh, so the total amount that we have available for HOME is two point nine million. So the total amount that we have of uh, of funds available between CDBG and HOME is four point one million. Um, also through the um, and, the annual action plan cycle, we do the public service grants and so we release a NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability, every year. This year, uh, the NOFA was released on January twenty-eighth and it closed on February twenty-fourth. The public service funding is capped at fifteen percent of the grant amount and the total available funds for public service grants for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred. The NOFA was also published in the San Guevara Valley Tribune on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two and posted on the city's website. An email was also sent to prior year providers or applicants. We also check on how many downloads uh, we had from the city's website and so um, we, we saw that we have sixty-four downloads. The city also received eight applications from public service organizations in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three for a total funding request of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred. On the next slide, um, we can um, show the amount and the uh, organizations that, that apply for the public service grants. So we have the Domestic Violence Advocate, which is uh, managed by the Police Department. Their request was thirty thousand dollars and the um, recommendation was for twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. For the family service center, the request for this fiscal year was thirty thousand and the recommendation is twenty-five recommendation is $25,667. For the graffiti removal, their request was 30,000. The graffiti removal program is administered by the public works department. The recommended funding was $28,970. For the pride program, which is also administered by the police department, the request was 40,000 and the recommendation was for $20,000. For youth employment, which is also managed by the parks and recreation department and community services, the request was for 30,000 and the recommendation is for 20,000. Church of the Redeemer requested $15,000 and the funding recommended was $13,429. The Coalition for the Homeless requested $10,000 and the recommendation is to fund at 10,000. And then we have a new applicant submitted a proposal requesting $340,300. But at this point, we recommend that not to fund this organization because they are a new organization and they didn't have a location to operate their program. So staff offer technical assistance so we can help them find a location and help them get the program together so then for the next round of funding that we have for any NOFAS or CDBG or CDBG coronavirus, they could be ready to apply for the funding. So for the CDBG program, their recommendations were to allocate for administration, $2,500 for fair housing and $186,34 for administration. For the public service grants, as I mentioned, Church of the Redeemer, $13,429, domestic violence, $23,334, the Coalition for the Homeless, $1,000, Family Service Center, $25,667, graffiti removal, $28,970, pride program, $20,000, youth employment, $20,000. And that adds up to $141,400, which is the 15% of the grant. And also, there are other projects that were recommended. Code enforcement, $126,000 pending the approval of the code enforcement plan that will be submitted to HUD. And the home improvement program or housing rehab, $50,000. And the home improvement loan program for $100,000. Also, this year, we're bringing a new project for infrastructure, which is the ADA curb ramps for $160,000. And so the total amount of CDBG that we are funding is $765,934. So we do have some unallocated CDBG funds, which there are some projects that could be proposed for infrastructure. And we can bring that later on on a substantial amendment. This year, there was additional funding because last year was the last year that we had to pay the Section 108 loan. And for home funding, their recommendations were, for administration, the 10%, $31,163. Habitat for Humanity, we already entered into an agreement for homeownership program. $285,000 of the CHODO funding will be allocated for the Habitat project. And then there is a recommendation to allocate $500,000 in home funds for the Cesar Chavez Foundation Affordable Housing Project in Baldwin Park and also $500,000 for the Retirement Housing Foundation Senior Housing Project. So the total amount allocated for home projects is $1,316,163. And we still have an allocated home funds of 1.6 million. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So Carol, on the recommendations, who is, who are the ones to give the recommendations as to what amounts are being recommended after they request a certain amount?
You mean the recommendations for the public service grants?
Correct, yes, for the NOFA.
So we have a housing commission and the housing commission was going to review all the proposals. Unfortunately, one of the housing commissioners resigned the same day and so we did not have quorum. So we had to put together a city staff committee to review the recommendations. Also, we had presentations from some of the nonprofit organizations that came to do the presentations. And so staff made the recommendations on the funding.
Got it. So basically, you guys recommended, if, for example, the domestic violence advocate, they requested 30,000 and you guys recommended 23,334. The committee that you guys established are the ones that recommended to give them the 23,000 versus the 30,000?
That's correct.
What criteria do you guys use to give these recommendations?
It's based on the 15% that we have allocated. And so we prorate a percentage based on the 15% of funds available that we have for the public service grants.
Got it. And then, going back to the CDBG funding recommendations, the CDBG housing projects code enforcement, the 126,000 that you have on there, is this for the new fiscal year or for the current fiscal year? Because I recall that we didn't have those 126,000. So are we eligible to recover this, these 126,000 after you guys filed the report?
Per HUD's direction, HUD recommended that we stop the program for this fiscal year and that we submit the plan for code enforcement because we have to determine an area that is deteriorated and we have to bring programs such as the housing rehab loans or grants to help and assist some of the properties or homeowners in the area. So there is a very comprehensive plan that we're putting together and then we will submit it to HUD. And if approved, then we will be able to utilize the 126,000.
So in a sense, we basically, we lost the 126,000 for fiscal year '22, but we're potentially going to retrieve those for next year's budget.
Correct.
Yes. So we cannot recover those 126,000, correct?
Unfortunately, yeah, that's correct.
And when will we know, will we get approved for this? Is it when you guys file the report?
The city submitted the response to the HUD monitoring and we still have pending the final review of the code enforcement comprehensive plan. So we're working on submit that by the end of the month.
Got it. And then you guys will give us an update once that's complete and we know what HUD responds with, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have some questions. Carol?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Carol. Thank you for that great report. I was actually looking for the list of all of the organizations that applied and the amount that they requested and the amount that was allocated because that's the format that I'm used to. So thank you for that presentation. I did notice that in this year's proposed plan for public service grants, we have a majority of programs that are city operations. And that was a concern for me because when I looked at the last plan, but at least that I could find on the city's records, if we look at 2019, we have one, two, three, four, five nonprofits that were funded out of 11. And then when I look at this year's plan or proposed plan, we have two nonprofits that are proposed out of seven. And the remainder, like I mentioned, are city operations. The reason why that was a concern for me is because community development block grants historically have been available to like nonprofit arms so that the city can build capacity and provide services that we don't traditionally or historically provide. We were just talking about the family service center. You know, a lot of these services that are offered there, like mental health, that's not something the city provides. You know, in the past, we have not provided homeless services. That's changing. But that's really what community, the intent of community development block grant has been. And then that's the reason why community input, you know, is required as part of the process and why historically we would go through the housing commission. I get that we've had challenges with that. So I wanted to just mention here for the council that moving forward, it would be, I think, to the city's benefit for us to look at nonprofits that we can collaborate with to provide services and to look at where we can fund some of the city operations, you know, from other grants or other funding streams. Because we're going in a direction where the majority of what is being funded are city operations. And with the needs that are out there in our community, you know, it would be nice to think that the city can provide, you know, for a good majority of them. But the truth is, we need partners. And it's a concern of mine that we didn't get more applications from partners. Like in 2019, we had, we had Santa Anita Family Services, St. John's Church Social Services, YWCA of San Gabriel Valley, in addition to the Church of the Redeemer and the East San Gabriel Valley Coalition for the Homeless. So again, you know, these nonprofits are providing services that we can't provide. So I would like us to really think about that for the future and what, and the message that we're sending. There's probably a reason why nonprofits didn't apply to the city because maybe they don't feel the support from our city, you know? And how can we do better? How can we share the stage with nonprofits in the community to better serve our community? For example, during COVID, we didn't have the capacity to, you know, provide food distribution. Church of the Redeemer stepped up incredibly. We also didn't have the capacity to deliver meals to our seniors. But Recreation and Community Services, working with Meals on Wheels, was able to deliver those services, much-needed services that we would not have been able to provide alone. So I'm just, I share all this because moving forward, I would love to see more of the nonprofits on this list than city operations. So for example, if I just look back in the last year, I'm glad to see Church of the Redeemer here. They've been an incredible part, community partner. Where's Meals on Wheels? I know that we're funding them, but you know, why aren't they part of this? I know Ode to Country Foundation has also been stepping up, you know, this last year for mental health awareness. There's an upcoming event I won't be able to attend, but you know, that's a service that we don't have the capacity to provide in the city. So my question here to all of us is, how can we do better? How can we better support nonprofits that are offering real services we don't have the capacity to provide alone? And how can we encourage more nonprofits to step forward? Share the stage with us, we share the stage with them, we provide support. And then the next CDBG cycles see more nonprofit participation. That's my, that's my question to all of us here at the city council, the director level, to our CEO. That's the intent of CDBG. It's to work with nonprofits, collaborate, give them their place in our community so that they can do what they do best and we can do what we do best. So that's, those are my comments more than anything. Carol, I did want to ask you about, and I'm sorry I'm taking up so much time, but I just thought it was important enough to share. Carol, I did want to ask about the youth employment program. Do we have an identified partner for that?
Yes, the city Parks and Recreation has the program. And that's the program that we funded also last year, but they do have a really good program. And actually, the housing authority on, under the housing division, we do get some youth employ, applicants that work with the housing authority. We train them. We have some success stories from the youth that have been trained through the housing authority. Some of them have been able to secure really good jobs. So it is managed by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay. And so who is our partner on that? It's just strictly administered by Recreation and Community Services? Because in the past, we have partnered with nonprofits.
Yes, council member. In this particular case, the Department of Recreation and Community Services administers the program. We are currently collaborating with AJCC, American Job, American Job California Center, I believe that's their proper name. We call them AJCC. And we are collaborating with them. They're also, they also have office space at the teen center as well as the adult school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then Carol, you mentioned that we are still going to flesh out the code enforcement program, right?
Yes.
As part of this process. And then when is this required to be approved? What's the deadline for the CDBG action plan?
The deadline is for the council to approve it and authorize the city manager to sign all the documentation. We have to submit some certifications and for staff to submit it to HUD. The deadline with HUD is May 15th.
Okay, so it's a very fast approaching. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
I have one more question, Carol. Do you know how many public units we currently have in the city?
Affordable housing units?
Public housing units?
I don't have the correct amount. I will have to look into that and I can send it to you.
Do you know if we're over the 250 mark?
I don't think so, yeah. We have a couple of projects coming on board, but, and then we have Metro Village. We do have public housing, 12 units there. So I don't think that we are up to 250 units.
Also, Mayor Protem, just to add, as Carol mentioned, we do have the Retirement Housing Foundation, which is going to be building a little over 50, a very low senior housing across the street from MetroLink. And we have Cesar Chavez, which is proposing a little over 50 units there on Ramona and Downing.
Great, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Actually, Mayor, I have one more question with regard to the family service center that will receive 25,000, a little more than 25,000 this year. What is that going towards, Carol?
It goes towards salaries. The family service centers provide several services. They have tutoring. They have, let me see. um, let me see.
I could go ahead and provide a brief description in regards to the family service center. The family service center offers a variety of social service assistance to the residents of Ballina Park. The F S C is currently located and easily accessible to all residents. The services offered at the F S C include, but are not limited to medical access, referrals, food bank referrals, emergency sho- shelter vouchers, emergency food vouchers, employment counseling, homeless prevention referrals, mental health referrals. And I could go on, but we service about two hundred and fifty app participants every month. Thank you.
And uh, Manny, the twenty-five thousand specifically that goes to salary that supports those operations?
Yes, it goes to full-time salary and I believe a small portion of part-time sa- salary.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. Carol, for the domestic violence or at the center, the domestic violence, uh, what is that amount of money going for?
For the domestic violence, the twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four um, goes also for salaries uh, for emergency assistance to victims. It pays for the coordinators for the police uh, department, um, also for health, social and shelter services.
Um, by shelter services, um, do you provide vouchers or what do they do?
Good evening. So I'm not quite sure how the money is um, located or how they do that, but I know that it does cover my um, part of my salary. So whatever I do with domestic violence is through the police department. So as far as uh, vouchers and all that, a lot of times it's I, I actually have to um, look for vouchers outside because we don't have that money for the vouchers. So I don't know how everything else works, uh, to be honest with you. But I know that it covers for the salary for my position for the domestic violence.
So it would be ideal if we did have extra money in there for vouchers.
Absolutely, because
There's times that you can't find it.
Yes, um, there are times when we do have, like in the middle of the night, we have somebody looking for a voucher. We used to be able to um, go down to the uh, motel, but since that's not a hotel anymore, a lot of times for the victims that just want to get out for the, you know, before, for the night or whatever, because they don't want to go into a shelter, then it would make it really easy for us. But because that's not there no more, I have to find um, ways of getting money to go ahead and do the voucher. I did, we did receive a I think a donation of five thousand um, from Blanca Rubio. So that's in a, you know, in the look, wherever they have the money. So I do and I do need it for a voucher, I'll go ahead and ask for the money.
And, and that's why I'm asking, because it's concerning, because I know in an emergency, uh, your concern is to make sure you house these individuals in a safe place and for you to have to worry about where am I gonna get the voucher.
Right.
So I, I really would like to see that the domestic violence get the full amount that they are asking. Because um, I have heard of the work that Cynthia, Cynthia does and, and the hurdles that she has to go through in order to provide the services on an emergency basis. I mean, you don't know when somebody's gonna come in. And if it's a, a family uh, with children, it's, it can't be just a little tiny hotel and it has to be somewhere accessible where she can get the voucher and have quick access to it. So I really would like to have uh, the domestic violence uh, program get the full amount because it is very important. I think uh, we're not aware of how many people are really in lead of, in need of this program. There's more than we actually think. I really would like to recommend that we up that amount um, to get it. I, let's figure out where we can get it from to up the amount of the domestic violence program.
And then what was the recommended amount? Sorry.
Thirty thousand, correct? Your recommended amount was thirty, correct?
Oh, what was the requested amount?
So I would like to go with the thirty thousand to make sure we have that extra money for the vouchers and uh, accessible to you, so you don't have to be.
And it would obviously be used just for that. I, I know that a lot of times people are a little concerned and all that. Obviously, we would make sure that, you know, we have track of everything. I used to do that before where we used to have vouchers. And I would have the victims actually bring the receipts of whatever they would purchase and all that, just so I could have track, just in case there was an audit or something I have proof of. I still have all that since, we've been doing it since two thousand and ten. So I do keep enough information to where there would never be a issue about where the money's going.
Right, and I understand that. And of course, I understand your, your sal- your salaries are definitely very important. But also we need that additional amount, money so we can provide the vouchers as needed for Cynthia, to provide the services for these families that, that needed on an emergency.
And so, and, and I think that's really important. And I, and I agree with you, Councilmember Avila. We should do the full amount, but I don't know if it's possible to go past the requested amount. Because I know that it, it goes just beyond that victim of domestic violence. And I know that, you know, it's not just a voucher that they need. Sometimes they might need milk. Cause they're, they're, you know, they're fleeing, they're fleeing violence or they're in crisis and they're leaving with their child.
Yeah.
You know, and their child's gonna need milk or they're gonna need clothes, diapers. Sometimes they flee, they have nothing on them except the clothes that they're wearing, so they might need
Right.
Closet, they might need.
Yeah, I might be very honest with you. There has been times where our actual officers have gone to go purchase some of the items for the victims or, you know, and obviously we're not gonna um, talk about that as far as, you know, but it does happen. And uh, I've seen it because they've called me and I said, well, I, I don't have a voucher right now. I can't do that. So they'll go ahead and provide them themselves.
So, so provide, make sure to provide that money for the voucher and additional services, supplies that they might need at that given moment. Because again, they walk out with nothing in their hands. An emergency and they just want help. So to be able to provide a little more than
Right.
than what we have right now, because I don't think it's enough. So if we can get that money out of another, I know you have to provide a certain percentage, right, for this area, from another area to make sure that they have that full amount needed. Carol, got another area to provide that.
Yeah, and if you guys ever, I may have any other questions and stuff like that as far as the victims, um, I'm here to answer any questions. We just have to remember that a lot of the victims are confidential.
Right.
So it's really important for me to have their trust to be able to help them out all the way.
Right, and we don't need to know names. We don't need any of that.
Okay.
I trust you've been doing this job for a very long time and I appreciate that. And people trust you. And we need to keep that confidentiality, but I also want to make sure that we have the funds so that you're there to provide that full, as much services available in your hands, because right now you don't have the full amount to provide.
And um, sorry, but since I'm up here, I'm gonna go ahead and take good advantage of the mic. Um, I know that one of the grants that we do also get is for the Pride Platoon. Um, we were obviously already started our platoon, I, I believe. Okay, I believe, I think they were giving us twenty. Right? And I, we had recommended forty. And the reason for that is because obviously with the, that money, we have to make sure that it covers what we need for the program, which is the uniforms, the food and all that, but also our officers that have to be out there. Um, so we're actually, yes, on Saturday, we had a parent council, now we had a parent council here as well. And I have the recommendations and they want the program to go longer. And they also are requesting or kind of recommending that we do it twice a year, which we used to do it before. Uh, twice a year, uh, back in, since I've been doing it twelve years and it seems like our budget keeps on going lower for that. Um, we did cut it last year bec- or the last two years because of COVID, but we're back on. And we were able to do a ten-week uh, program. I was able to work with all my partners and all the different organizations to do it within the eight year, uh, eight weeks. We're doing one weekend, it's the two days enough to where we're able to give the students their credits. So I think that the Pride Platoon program is very important, especially because it kind of helps us in the long run with um, students, so.
Thank you Cynthia for bringing that up, because that was my next one. Um, the Pride Pl- Platoon, as you know, it services youth, at-risk youth, uh, uh, that may be not heading in the right direction and parents are asking for help and direction on how they can help their youth. And this is a conversation that we've actually been having that we're focusing on helping the youth this summer and the Pride Platoon was one of the targets to continue to help this program. And that was my question. What, what is that budget used for, which you just answered it right now? And definitely with helping the youth, we need the parenting classes.
Right.
Because you could guide the student, but if the parent doesn't know how to guide them, it's not going to be enough.
Right.
So that's another area that I wanted to allocate more money to, the Pride Platoon, because it, it kind of goes hand in hand. And again, since we're working with the youth, with the at-risk youth this summer, I wanted to continue to enhance the Pride Platoon. And I did notice that the money keeps going down. And I see our officers out there with the kids. We're trying to do something for our youth. We're trying to save the youth so that they're not out on the streets and um, creating problems for themselves and the rest of our community. So it's a very important program. If we have the interest of parents bringing their students here to improve themselves, then we need to be able to provide that service. So I would also like to up that amount uh, at least to thirty-five um, so that we can provide uh, better services for them.
And again, um, uh, that's some, another thing that obviously I keep track of everything along with um, the officers and everything that we do spend. Um, we've been very blessed and lucky that we have a lot of organizations that work with us that come out on our, you know, their time. They volunteer their time and stuff like that. So if it wasn't for the partnerships that we've built through the year, you know, through the years, um, it would be a little harder, but we definitely do need a little bit more support with that program.
If we could do the forty, that's even better. Remember, the youth is our future. And if we don't take care of them, if we don't protect them and stop them from going in the wrong direction and um, finding other opportunities, which may not be good, we're gonna lose them. And what that happens, it creates problems for our community. It provi- it, it creates problems for, for everybody. So if we can help the youth, we need to do it, please. So if we can allocate the whole forty, great. If not thirty-five, that would be great as well. Any other questions for me?
About allocating? So we're using fifteen percent of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three C D B G funding. But we have two hundred and nineteen thousand and the unexpended prior year. So are we allowed to use fifteen percent of that, Carol?
Uh, no, we are only allowed to use fifteen percent of the grant that we receive. Um, we, since we haven't received the official allocations, we don't know if we're going to receive less funding this year or if we may get a little increase. So depending on that, we can um, we have to recalculate the fifteen percent and reallocate it. Um, but if we are um, going to recommend to fund um, at a higher amount, some of the programs, we need to look into which programs we are going to decrease the funding.
So, so even if we have one point one million currently in the C D B G account, we're only allowed to allocate fifteen percent of the current estimate, not of the total amount, correct?
That's fifteen percent of the grant amount that we receive and that includes fifteen percent of program income, but we haven't received any program income. So we couldn't count um, that. So it will be only fifteen percent of the nine hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Correct. So what happens with the unexpended amount? What is that used for?
Then, uh, the unex- unexpended amount could be allocated for other um, infrastructure projects or for other uh, projects that are not public service grants.
Got it. So maybe uh, as a council, maybe we would want to see about allocating uh, some type of ARPA funds to uh, to help with the domestic violence vouchers and then also uh, the Pride Platoon. Since it seems like, I don't know about, I mean, as it is, you know, we're not allocating what, what was requested for items one through seven, so I don't know about decreasing any amounts.
I have a question. Uh, Mayor Protem Damian. Um, Sam, for the ADA curb ramp projects, would we be able to get grants to help with that instead of using the whole hundred and sixty from C D B G? Could we get money from somewhere else for the curb ramps ADA projects?
Uh, ye- yes, of course. There's uh, special funding available and there's grants that we can apply for.
So if you don't mind, can we take some money from you from there? And, cause I know you're great at getting money for your projects and it's just easier to do that. Would we be able to do that?
No.
You tell me why.
It has to be only fifteen percent of the total grant, which is the hundred and forty-one thousand. So um, for uh, infrastructure, it's a different
Infrastructure, okay. So it would have to be from somewhere else here, so.
Unless we had um, unused money from the fifteen percent category from the previous year. I think that's what Mayor Protem Damian asked if there was any unused of the fifty percent category.
Yeah. Even if it's unused, you have to carry it over to the next year for other projects. Um, it is
But not for the same?
No, um, the, the requirement is fifteen percent of the grant that you receive plus fifteen percent of program income. So like I mentioned, we didn't receive program income, so we only have that fifteen percent of the grant.
So, guide me, from these areas, not, I'm not saying we're gonna move them yet. What areas can I move money from, from these um, categories?
So you can, you can move money within the um, grants that we are recommending for the nonprofits and for the city departments.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be best if we just leave it as is and then just do the ARPA funds?
Do we have the ARPA funds available?
So, so one, that, that's, that's a, uh, I believe a, a great suggestion. You can approve what we have proposed and direct us to uh, to work with the police department and our finance department to make up in other sources, ARPA being one of them, or maybe some other exchange that we can do with Sam and his special funds. And, and uh, you can direct us to do that, but approve the recommended, recommended amounts, knowing that you want forty thousand for the uh,
Pride Platoon.
The platoon, and then thirty thousand for the domestic violence.
Correct.
Okay.
So then that would be the direction that we approve this, but that we get funds to make up the amounts that we're missing for the Pride Platoon and for the domestic violence program so that they have the full funding because they're very, all of the programs are very important, don't get me wrong. But uh, we need to allocate the funds necessary for these two programs so they can run an efficient program because again, the Pride Platoon's saving our youth and um, domestic violence is saving our families. So it's very important that we do get that funding. So either way,
Councilmember Avila, can I add something?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I support everything that you're saying. Um, and thank you for mentioning the domestic violence advocate item. Um, in two thousand nine, I, I worked with our city manager at that time to create this program and identify the funding. And unfortunately, it came from C D B G, which was actually a surprise to me. But fortunately, we were able to provide the program, so I was happy however we were able to fund it. But that was in two thousand nine. Um, you know, when we introduced it to the city council, of course, you know, the council supported it. We moved forward with C D B G. And my hope, you know, from now, from then until now, would have been that as far as salary, we would have absorbed that somewhere else in the city and made the C D B G funding available to supplement that program with vouchers, with how, you know, housing, food, whatever was needed. And so I would like to take your request one step further. And since we're gonna be working with our finance department, find out, can we absorb for these salary requests, can we absorb them in a different account? So that C D B G is freed up for real, like, community, you know, purposes. And like I said, so that we can, we can grow our capacity by partnering with more nonprofits. So on the, on the domestic, I support you on approving it as is and finding other funds. But moving forward, it would be so much better, I think, if we could find the twenty-three thousand that pays towards the salary of the D V A. Find it in a more, you know, like in a general fund or in a different funding source that is sustainable. And then allow C D B G to supplement the program and allow it to grow too, and to allow it to expand. And, and that was my hope that, you know, all these years later, we would have been able to expand this program. So I support what you're saying and I would ask if we are gonna engage the finance department for the next round of C D B G. So I support what you're saying, and I would ask if we are gonna engage the finance department for the next round of CDBG, that we look, that we break this down and where there are salaries, can we look at alternative funding sources that are sustainable? And then free this money up for like saturation into the community, expanding some of these programs and building capacity.
Definitely, good idea to do.
Thank you.
In the meantime, if we're gonna increase it, I think maybe we should, instead of giving the thirty, we should maybe try to do thirty-five or forty for the domestic violence. Because we're gonna need, we're gonna need to make sure that she has enough vouchers, not only for emergency usage, but also for hotel vouchers, which are desperately needed when she's dealing with some of these cases.
Definitely, even better.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should up it, and then not just for the vouchers and everything, but for other necessities. And then maybe you could even have, I mean, depending on how the funding, even with ARPA, you can have like a, you know, a little closet in your office so that you have clothes readily available to offer to somebody who might need it.
We used to do that, we used to have all that before, when I was just doing the domestic violence. So it could happen, I mean, we just need, be able to have that support from everybody, yeah.
Or so maybe you even come back with a wish list, give us an idea.
Right, so yeah, let's do that and let's look into the.
Give her that opportunity.
Why not? It's not for her, it's for the community members.
It's just for everybody in the community.
So let's go ahead and do that, what Councilmember Damon said, the thirty-five. Or let's look into the extra, yes, for them. We're gonna approve what we have here, if that's okay with everybody. And then look for the additional funding to go up to thirty-five for domestic violence and then the Pride Platoon to go up to forty. And get us a wish list so we can better work with this program. And Councilmember Garcia has a great idea, if we could supplement salaries from somewhere else so that the full funding goes to actually the services and the needs, that would be even better. So that's definitely another discussion.
I do want to add one more thing. In two thousand, right before COVID, we did get a grant from Kaiser. We used to be able to get the grants from them as well. I know that it's still there, so we're gonna be using that one as well. But we did receive Kaiser. So whenever there is a chance for us to do, try to get it from Kaiser as well, they're very supportive of the program as well.
Perfect, yes, they are.
For the, for the Pride Platoon.
Thank you.
Great, so I think we're ready to move on. So make a motion to approve item number nine with added recommendations, including subsidizing with ARPA funds and. Cynthia, we'd like to see it.
Thank you.
Ideas you have. And so that is my motion, can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, and so we are down to communications. I have a couple, but Mayor Protem, go ahead, go first.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It might give staff direction to include a new hourly part-time rate so that we can complement the recently approved new entry level hourly rate as part of the upcoming fiscal year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. As you all know, we recently increased the entry level part-time pay from fifteen-an-hour to sixteen-eighty-two-an-hour, especially over at our Parks and Recreation Department. So within the new fiscal budget, we want to make sure that we address the salary steps. So if staff can get back with the staff report for the upcoming fiscal year so that we can complement that new entry level salary, that would be my direction.
Great, do you have a comment?
No, I agree, I like that. Because we need to make sure that we don't discourage the staff that we already have here.
I agree.
And that, that they're getting the pay that they deserve. So we'll study what the other cities are paying. And we have our new staff, our new employees coming in at a higher salary, we need to adjust. So let's plan on that, please.
Great, thank you. And then so I had a couple of ideas. So I know that we have our Baldwin Park Bridge and it's a little dark at night. Want to see if maybe we could light it up a little bit better. And I think depending on how creative we get, that might encourage people to use that street, especially now that we are closing down our Little Main and we want to kind of move traffic around. I think that street could be used a lot more. So something I'd like Public Works to look into. And then the high schools have been reaching out and they would like, they would like the idea of, you know, commemorating our seniors that are graduating with like a banner program. And I think it's possible within, well, not jurisdiction, but within the area of each high school. So I think that would be nice, it's something that other cities do and it does provide some color to the area. And I know that last, last meeting, I did ask for direction to give a grant from the city to the marching bands, because we do have two, aside from our, aside from the fundraising. I think our fundraising is going to be split in half, so it's not gonna be much. So I don't know if we're getting any more authority or if we should set a, set amount for each one so that they have it ready for Saturday.
We would need our finance department to look at all those numbers, right? What number are you looking at?
So I was thinking anywhere from ten to twenty thousand.
Urban?
Urban.
So has Rose looked into it yet to see how it would affect our finance or where would this money come from?
The mayor had mentioned it obviously, and so we wanted to, whether we do it as a sponsorship, which is an idea in line with them participating in the, in the walk. Or if we just do it as a, so what did you say is coming up, the Saturday, Mayor?
That's our health walk.
Oh, the walk, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if, you just can, I think this is, this gives us direction to figure it out. If, if that's what you're, yeah, we can figure it out how we get the money over to them.
Well, again, I would like, it's a great idea. I would like finance to look at the numbers. You don't necessarily need to give it to them then, once we do figure it out, we can always invite them to come and present it then. That way you have time and you're not rushed. Look at the numbers, I'm just thinking of staff time and it's already Wednesday and the event is Saturday.
Right.
If Rose has had time to look at all those numbers. But that is a good idea, it is, I just want to make sure she has time to look at the numbers and.
Right, we would definitely welcome more time, but I mean, if, I see the synergy of the event occurring on Saturday and the presentation will be made there. I mean, if we have enough of a concept and if you're comfortable with having just a concept and then still making some sort of ceremonial presentation, that could still happen. But to be able to have a full agreement in place, probably not by Saturday.
What do you think, Mayor, we can always present it another time. I just want to make sure staff has enough time to look at it.
Yeah, so I think you guys have a team meeting, so you can think it over.
Yeah.
Okay. And if you are not aware yet, Vitacane has opened in our downtown. And I have taken some of our staff, and I took Manny today and Irma, it was pretty good. Vitacane, so Vitacane is a new business that took over the old Menche spot and they do sugarcane-based drinks. So they are having their, they are having their ribbon cutting on Saturday, the day of the, the day of the mental health walk. But they are willing to push it a little later till five PM. So if staff and council can show up, I think that would be neat or support our new, our new neighbor, who was very excited to be here. And then we do have, and then I just wanted to talk about community art. I know that we're pushing for a lot of art and I know that, you know, graffiti has been a thing. I mean, it always has been. One of the ways that we can diminish or discourage people is a lot of time by putting up murals. But maybe we can find a program that allows, or find a funding source that allows our local youth and local artists to be able to have a space for public art, maybe essentially in areas that are hot zones for graffiti. And if there's no more questions, comments, I believe.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Really quick. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the event this Saturday. But I do remember that last year it was celebrated as a great success. And it looks like it will be a great success once again this Saturday. I do remember that the organization, I believe, that initiated this walk, if I understood correctly, was the Oath to Country Foundation. And we recognized them at the veterans' event for their contribution, you know, to the city. And so, you know, I would say, when I, when I saw the program, I think it's great that we're collaborating with so many different partners to have the greatest turnout. But, you know, let's not lose sight of what that event will be for. And it is very appropriate, and it's appropriate that it was born during COVID because we did see a lot of mental health crisis, you know, and unfortunately suicides among young people and adults because they were just having such a hard time during COVID especially. So I just wanted to really encourage that we, we do all that we can to really highlight how important that subject matter is in this community. And again, it speaks to the city of Baldwin Park, working with a nonprofit to provide services that we historically have not. We, we've never had a mental health walk, to my knowledge. So, you know, let's really keep the focus on what, you know, what its intent is. And I know that it's, it looks like it's gonna be a fun day with a lot of activities and a lot of great partners. But I just wanted to encourage that because I haven't had the opportunity to join. I won't, I'll be, you know, I'll be with family this weekend. But again, just, you know, keeping it as focused as possible, I think, is a good thing. Especially since a lot of people are really struggling right now with mental health issues. And so just wanted to share that. And really, you know, let's share the stage with our partners, you know, let's really highlight them and their contribution. This is a city event, but we rely on our partners too, you know? And I think that we can do better about sharing the stage. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, and then just so people are aware, so this is a very community-based event. It's been a big success last year, it'll be a big success this year. And we started this off and we wanted to fundraise for the American Legion, make sure that our veterans had a safe place, a healthy and structural place to enjoy. And so I think the idea now is that we can do this every year and fundraise for a different, for a different organization. Music and visual arts are essential to our mental health, they're essential to our development. And unfortunately, a lot of the times, they're some of the first things to go in working-class communities when budgets fail. So to me, it was very important, not just because I went to both high schools, but because I was there, I was a band student and I saw firsthand how important it is to have these, have these resources for our community, especially at a young age and making sure that, you know, people of color and working class and communities like ours have access to recreation and have access to arts and have access to those skills. Because they, they stick with you forever, right? And it's a different way to learn math, it's a different way to learn expression, emotion. So, you know, just want to reiterate that we are keeping, keeping goal-focused. We're making sure that these are not just events that we enjoy, but that they help de-stigmatize a serious issue and help and benefit community organizations that help alleviate those issues a lot of the time. So I wanted to say that. So thank you, everybody. I believe at this point, we are recessing to close session. Everybody else, I ask you to leave the council chambers. Good night, everybody.
Good night and get some rest. Especially the seniors, they've been at it all day.
Recording stopped.
You have a big day tomorrow.